Good evening. It's 6:30 on Monday, February the 28th, 2022. And now call the Winton Woods City School Board of Education meeting to order. Please turn your cell phone to silence and rise with me for the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Seymour, would you please call the roll?
Brian?
Here.
President?
Present. Thank you. As we work through our agenda, I just want to remind our listening audience that we work, we follow the SMART goals, specific, measurable, achievable, relevant, and time-sensitive goals that have been established by the district, which also includes student achievement, resource alignment, and community engagement. So our first item on the agenda tonight is our district honors, recognitions, gifts, and introductions. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President, Board. I am going to go a little bit forward. See some incredible young ladies that probably need to get their rest because they have a game tomorrow, right? Or is it practice, Coach?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay, all right. I mean, practice tonight.
We just got done.
Okay, he says practice, more practice tonight. So I'd like for Coach Gray to come up to the podium, please. You guys are clapping like you really love this guy. So congratulations to Mr. Carlton Gray, head coach. Congratulations to our incredible Lady Warriors on capturing the Eastern Cincinnati Conference Championship title with a regular season record of 15-1. Now, Mr. Gray, I heard that they have another award. Can you tell me about it a little bit?
The record presently stands at 25-1 now, and we got our district championship on Saturday. So it's the first one, I think, since 2009.
So I'm a little bit lost when the girls are just blazing up and down the court. I can't recognize who's who. So if you would call them up, have them just remove their masks quickly so we can get a chance to look at their beautiful faces, see just how incredible they are, that would be good and all.
All right, I'll start with the youngsters first. Freshman, Na'ila Walker. Come on, come on. Take the mask off. Freshman, Ryan Davis. Freshman, Denaya Tramal. Junior, Jada Knighton. And the rest of our young ladies here are all seniors. Got Deja Thompson. Taylor White. Chance Gray. And Faith Gannaway. And also back here hiding is David Lumpkin, who assists us as one of our assistant coaches, also our A.D. So he's been very critical to what we've been doing this year as well.
Just so the public can understand a little bit about what these young ladies have accomplished. Coach Gray, how many games did we win last year?
I wasn't here, so let's just make sure that was clear. But last year, we were 6-11, I believe.
Okay, very good.
So we've had almost a 20-game turnaround in one year. That's a testament to how hard these kids have worked.
Well, we will be there tomorrow night cheering you ladies on, and thank you very much for everything you do. You've represented us very, very well, and we are extremely proud of you.
We appreciate you. Thank you.
It gives you chills, doesn't it? The next one is, I'd like to bring Dee, can you come up, please, from the Juana's Group? So we have what's called the Character's Key. And you know, one of the things that's really exciting is when you have young people who are working diligently in athletics and working extremely hard academically, a character's one of the major factors that counts. And so we want to recognize Carla Avanes here. Carla?
So I'm going to read a little bit about what Carla stands for as it relates to the Character's Key. Carla is a perfect example of what it means to be a great citizen. Carla is also willing to help out in school, whether it's helping another student, cleaning up after herself and others, or alerting adults to information if they need to know. Additionally, Carla has a positive attitude towards others and always shows a zeal for learning. Carla also participates in community activities such as art classes, community center, or going to the library. She's also willing to advocate for herself and takes pride in her learning, and this is Carla Avanes.
So you want to say a little bit about the award?
Well, Juana's is your partner in the community, and part of our mission and vision is one child, one community at a time, and helping out. Doing service projects, raising money for scholarships, which applications will be going, with your counselors, will be available for college scholarships. So please fill those out. But we're here for you in the community. Anytime there's a need, Juana's is there for you. And a lot of the agencies that we've helped fund, help fund helping in this community. So we just thank you for the support.
Great, thank you.
Does Mr. Depp have family with her?
Yeah. So who came with you tonight?
My mom.
Okay, Mom, come on up. It's time for that photo op, Jayden. So when you have the caring piece, there has to be another part, and that's called trustworthiness. And Winton Woods Middle School wants to recognize Jessica Lopez Salvador. Jessica. So Winton Woods Middle School is proud to recognize Jessica Lopez Salvador for her trustworthiness. Jessica has proven herself trustworthy in both her academics and behaviors. She models trust, respect, and responsibility in her everyday interactions with peers and staff. Her trustworthiness is also evident every time she supports new Winton Woods Middle School enrollees as Student Ambassador for House Griffin. Wow, that's amazing. Thank you for being a positive member of our community. Jessica, your trustworthy actions are appreciated and valued every day, and this is from your great principal, Mr. Depp. Mr. De, when you were a student, did your principal ever write a letter like that about you?
Not that I can remember.
Okay.
Did we get letters home about that?
Great opportunity. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
So this one's a little bigger. This is the Student of the Month for the entire month. Selena?
Selena.
All right. So this is how we do it. I keep searching, and I will keep waiting, and I will keep waiting for you every month, and Selena, I will find you. So I will see you next month, where we're going to celebrate Selena for being Juana's Student of the Month. I'd like the Scholastic Art Competition folks to come up. Mr. Rindon, where are you?
I'm at Havelardo.
Yes, Mr. Havelardo. This drawing was accepted into the Scholastic Art Competition. He will attend opening night, and his artwork will be on display at the Cincinnati Art Academy. You want to say a little bit about that piece?
I've worked many hours even before I was in it. I want to say thanks to Ms. Beck for making your work known and appreciated for the art academy.
Ms. Beck, you come up and get that picture, please.
I want to say something. Not only is Havelardo's artwork amazing, I can be beautiful. He hung up his artwork himself. He went down to the Art Academy, hunkered and installed it, and then after the show, took it down. Usually, I'm the one doing the groundwork, but that was so amazing, just such an amazing piece. And your family's.
Show us for the family and the board. No getting your artwork accepted into the Cincinnati Art Academy is a big deal. It's like a girl's basketball championship. This next group of young people, I'm just excited about because they did something that they didn't have to do. And they participated in a gifted, talented art class with Ms. McNeil, their teacher. And the Winton Woods Board of Education would like to congratulate the following students who designed and painted the Blessing Box in conjunction with Forest Park. Kaylee Anderson, come up. Jayden Beaman. Desiree Martinez. Myra. Yes. Danielle Pitts. Mitzi Rush. You're the man. You can hit the buzzer on the day. You know, that's a good deal.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
So can you tell us what inspired you to be part of this organization with this Blessing Box?
You know, I've been a gifted, talented artist for a few years, and you know, it's just something that I guess we kind of do or have in different communities, and you know, I just did because I wanted to, you know?
Bravo. We've seen the Blessing Box right in front of the firehouse. All kinds of nice goodies in there for families to come up and pick for free, and it's just a testament of what our community is really all about. Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it. Who are Coach Gray with you tonight?
I brought my mom and my brother.
Come on up, Mom and brother. Tell me who you get your inspiration from?
Definitely my brother. He's also gifted. He actually taught me, and I just, you know, trying to piggyback a while, but I think I could say out there.
I'm back. Naomi. Kelly. She also was on that ticket.
So we have all these talented children. We have smart kids, we have trustworthy kids, we have gifted kids, we have caring kids, we have athletic kids. We just have incredible young people in Winton Woods City Schools. So thank you, guys. So you know, we have several things. that send us great children, they have to be molded and loved by great teachers. So I'd like to have Mr. Josh Amstead come up. I was counting the awards over the years, and Josh, this is 8,450. So the 2022 AFS USA Global Educator of the Year is Mr. Amstead. So Mr. Amstead, go to the mic. Tell us a little bit about you and what you do and why.
Yeah, is it okay if I take my mask off?
It is okay.
Okay, cool, awesome. Yeah, so this award was something that I really, really wanted to give for this community. This community really deserves to be celebrated for all of the amazing people that we have within it. There's not a community in Ohio that I've ever seen or been a part of that has so much diversity and so many amazing people with so many different stories. And I think it's our job to be able to tell those stories, both to our students, to make sure that they understand how amazing we are, but also to the public, to the community, and now in this case, to the nation. So AFS USA is an organization that originally partnered to have student exchanges in our country with 60 other countries in the world. They've now expanded to really try to showcase where global education is working in communities across, specifically the United States. So this year, they did select me for their Global Educator of the Year, in addition to a Global School of the Year, which I plan on nominating the Academy of Global Studies next year, to go ahead and just double dip, because I think we deserve that one, too. It's a really great opportunity for us to really showcase what we do on a national level in this community for Winton Woods and for the Academy of Global Studies. So from our mentoring program, to offering global speakers, to, you know, really taking the moments of the world and discussing the crisis in Ukraine, which we've been doing in zero well for the last couple of days, all of this is really representative of the people that we have in our community and how amazing that they are, and how many amazing things they do after high school, which is key. You know, AGS has been around for 10 years now, and we have graduates who consistently come back. Some of them are teachers now in AGS themselves that I had in class, which is kind of crazy because it makes me feel a little bit old, even though I don't feel like I'm old. But it's just really cool to see this full circle of global education just coming to fruition. So, yeah.
I don't want your dad to ever say you've never given him anything, so give him the year.
Okay.
All right, there you go. Here you go, Dad. So you don't have to get him a Christmas gift, a birthday gift. Come on back as a quick team. I just want to know where you get all these tall freshmen. I'm excited. My people are from New Sunday, Chayden. Big Brother, what's your name?
Alex.
Alex? You know, we see so many different things in a community where older siblings are not guiding younger siblings the right way, and I think that was absolutely powerful, that he says he gets a lot of his inspiration from you. So thank you. Selena? So Selena is the Student of the Month, and we've sent a scout out there to find you. We've been looking. Selena has been recommended for the Juana's Student of the Month, and she displays a true warrior character. Selena's a sophomore and is very academically talented and enjoys a good challenge. She is within the top 5% of her 10th grade class. Not only is Selena academically talented, she is also very active in extracurricular activities. She is the current president of a key club and has come up with many ideas and ways to support and give back to our community. Selena says she loves wearing the school uniform, and she'd like to have that continued. She also participates in our student council. During the school day, she focuses on her work, but also finds time to enjoy her day with her friends. She's very positive and helpful to students within our building and takes pride in helping others. And this is written by an incredible lady, Christina Jarenek, our high school counselor. Come on up, family. Now, we have a new tradition at Winton Woods. When we look for you and you're not here, then we have you say a few words.
So we accidentally went to the high school, and then we're not here.
All right, that's good enough. The next award goes to this incredible, incredible jazz band, Mr. Habel. Where are you? Jordan Habel? Okay, so we're going to find you, but I'm going to tell you, Mr. Habel and his jazz band, the Board of Education commends the Winton Woods High School Jazz Band for being selected to perform at the Cincinnati Contemporary Arts Jazz Orchestra, February 17. They are the only high school that, I actually went to that event, it was amazing. How many of you have been to the Redmore? It was an incredible event. The jazz band played magnificently, and they received all kind of applauses and accolades for their work. So Mr. Habel and to the jazz band, thank you very, very much. There was also some singers there that performed, and they gave us a full hour to perform. For a high school band to perform at the Redmore for an hour is a really big deal. So if you ever get a chance to go, I'm sure Mr. Habel's group will be back there again touring, and hopefully they'll make it to Music Hall, and we'll be even more excited. So if you see Mr. Habel, thank him very, very much for his talented kids. And that is all for the recognition, honors, and gifts for tonight, Madam President and Board.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, and congratulations to all our students, teachers, and administrators, as well as to the wonderful community partners for your dedication and sacrifice in serving our district. A special thank you to the Fire Department and to one of our newest board members, Mrs. Deborah Bryant, and all the other individuals who took part in establishing the Blessing Box. And a special congratulations to Mr. Josh Amstead and Mr. Carlton Gray with the Lady Warriors, capturing the Eastern Cincinnati Conference Championship title with a 15-1 school season record and an overall record of 25-1. We just found that out tonight, so that's worth noting. And last but certainly not least is Mr. Jordan Habel and the Winton Woods High School Jazz Band on being selected to perform with the Cincinnati Contemporary Jazz Orchestra. And I believe I speak for the entire board when I say that we are very proud of all of you. So thank you very much for what you do.
Madam President?
Yes.
Before we have the young people part and we take our break, I'd like for Mrs. Bryant to say a few words for her sorority and organization that put the time into the Blessing Box, because that was huge.
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here and to remember, I am truly, I'm actually almost in tears, delighted to see how many talented people we have here. Thank you to the Art Department for an idea that turned into something bigger than any of us, for the students who decorated it. It is, I can't say enough, but thank you all for what you do every day to educate our students and for being the model students that we know our warriors are. And we have another Blessing Box coming.
Very good.
Very good. Thank you. All minds clear, our next item on the agenda is recess, so we'll take a five-minute break. Thank you. We now resume our regular board meeting. I was kind of loud, sorry. And the next item on the agenda is 4.01, which is public comments. And since we don't have any tonight, we'll move right on to 5.01, which is the Winton Woods Teachers Association representative, and I believe we have a representative here tonight.
We have no comments at this time.
All right, thank you very much for coming to our meeting tonight. The next item is 5.02, which is the Ohio Association for Public School Employees, and we have a representative. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President, Superintendent Smith, our audience. I just want to say congratulations to all of our wonderful students. It just showed how much talent that we honestly have in our district, and our proud parents for coming out and supporting our students tonight. On the behalf of the support staff, we just want to say congratulations to each and every one of them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is 6.01, which is the Approval of Minutes as Presented. Board, unless you see any necessary changes, a motion will be in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Coon?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. Now, right now, we're going to take a little deviation from our regular agenda that you see. The next item would be 7.01, but we're going to move to 9.01, which is the Superintendent's School Reports, so for the sake of his staff and being able to do their reports. So the next item we're going to go to is 9.01, which is reports of the superintendent, and Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President, I'm going to move it to 9.02.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And to come back to one. This team has been an amazing team all week, and you'll hear about some of their accomplishments later on tonight, whether it's been here with me Saturday and some Sundays as we prepare for some other situations that occurred in our district. And so I'd like for them to, they're going to start out fresh and early with me in the morning, and I want them to get the opportunity to get home so that they can get a good night rest, because they have been here for many, many hours. But I'd like to start with the facilities update with Mr. Denny.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Good evening, Board. Appreciate the opportunity to be able to share an update on our district facilities master plan. Been working on this for quite some time. Of course, the most visible part is the brand-new buildings, and we're able to be in this environment tonight. Just so thankful for that opportunity and to the community for supporting it in 2016 and on. But the plan does continue to be walked forward and advanced, and I have a couple updates on demolition. We continue to engage with alpha demolition for the reduction of the facility at Winton Woods Primary South, and that is nearing completion. Just footers, some pavement, and the decommissioning of a sewage treatment plant on site there. And then the Winton Woods Elementary School, near and dear to my heart, spent a lot of time there. That building is also scheduled to be, well, actually, demolition began last week in earnest, so the abatement's been completed, and the pieces of that building are now coming down as well. So expected to be completed within about a month, where it'll substantially be completed. Continuing on to renovation- Continuing on to renovation and moving away from demolition, we also have abatement at the former intermediate school located on Waycross is substantially complete, actually as of today. We received a final clear air quality report, so the abatement at that building is completed. There'll be some pieces we'll pick up along the way toward the end of the project, but 73,000 square feet are roughly completed with about 3,000 remaining to be done as construction goes along later with renovation. There are two phases of renovation coming, I think we've touched on that before, but I want to make sure I share this again, both for the Board as well as the community. There's the design of the building envelope and the HVAC upgrades, and that's funded through federal ESAR dollars, which is a huge benefit to our district to maximize those dollars, but that consists of replacement and upgrades to the HVAC system as well as the rest of the envelope for the building, which is windows, window frames, doors, door frames. That's nearing design completion, should hopefully be going out to bid in April. We'll see if we can stay with that, and then hopefully begin construction on that phase in the summer. Past that, there's another phase of design and renovation that's underway right now. We're in the very beginning stages of that. They'll develop what's called the program of requirements. After that comes schematic design, after that comes design development, and then after that comes construction documents, and that's what'll actually hit the streets for bid. But we're right now just entering the program of requirements phase. They're doing what they call a adjacency mapping, looking at what functions go where, and so that's just begun by SHP, our design firm. So, we're hoping to go out to bid and bring proposals to you this summer for your review and favorable approval at that time. So, that consists of the update for now, and yeah, Mr. Smith.
Here's a burning desire coming from my far-right, Mrs. Coon, and she wants to know, where is that statue?
The statue, what's currently...
She's been asking me about it every week.
I believe it, Mr. Smith.
Okay.
I get a call about that about every week from a concerned graduate or alumnus or community member.
So, we just want to just conclude, the statue is safe.
Statue is safe. Actually, I have a photo of it from last week.
We already have a place, a dedicated place where we're going to put that statue, so it can be very visible to the community.
Yes.
Okay, all right, the statue is safe.
Yeah, and we just, we want to make sure it's done right.
Yeah.
So, we want to deploy professional design services and make sure we get all the correct permits, of course, because we want to do things, you know, all by smoothing by the numbers, so it will find a new home.
You don't know where the home is yet or to be announced?
Well, we're working on it.
We're gonna keep you in suspense.
Okay, suspense is good. I keep us kind of back.
I can tell you, I can tell you this. You will be able to see, you'll be able to see the statue whenever you want to, that's all I can tell you.
That scares me.
Early on.
But I will have to say to you guys that it's a pleasure working with Mr. Denny on some of the designs and some of the implementations, and I know that people may think that we just say yes to everything that the architect brings to the table. I can tell you, we fight and we battle, and in order to get our needs met based on what our children deserve. And so, we're trying to make sure that the building is as eloquent as the two campuses that we have now, and Ms. Styles is gonna be an integral part of that conversation so that the We Warriors can be placed in a place that's safe and reliable and dependable. And so, it's, like I said, it's a pleasure working with Mr. Denny. Sometimes the architects and the other design people are not that happy with us, but as long as I'm happy with him and he's happy with me, then they figure it out because this is about our children. So, Mr. Denny?
Thanks, Mr. Smith. Yeah, I appreciate the opportunity. It's been wonderful to see this come to life. Wouldn't be able to do it without his support, the support of the Board and the rest of the team, so it's, yeah, it's been a really great experience. Thank you, sir. That concludes the facilities update for this month, and I don't know if there's any questions or anything at this time. Okay. All right, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate it.
10.01.
Well, are we gonna go to 9.01?
10.01. So, we can get the personnel schedule, and then that team can transition. That would be the last of the last.
10.01, so the next item on the agenda, well, let me thank Mr. Denny, and I'll let you know that we do appreciate the updates and hearing about the initiatives that are happening within the buildings. So, the next item on the agenda is 10.01. Mr. Seymour, did you get that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, which is personnel schedules. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President, the recommendation is to approve the personnel schedules, schedules A, B, C, E, M, and D, and if you have any particular questions, Ms. Wilson, the HR Director, and our legal advisor will be more than happy to give you an overview.
Don't like, oh, should we have a motion?
Yes, if we get a motion on the floor, then we'll do the discussion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the personnel schedules as presented.
So, motion is seconded. Now, we can ask any questions.
Oh, I appreciate the format of these, and I did have a question, and mainly because I haven't been on the Board for a couple of years, and I know we have new members talking about the schedules, and you don't have to go into great detail about those tonight, but maybe in the future it'd be helpful for my colleagues to hear a little bit about how the schedules, or the steps, I should say, not schedules, steps work for the different employees, or you can give a synopsis, you don't have to go into great detail, but just a little bit about it.
Oh, sure. Well, steps, salaries are based on, for employees, it's based on a salary schedule, and it's not unique to Witten Woods City Schools. There's an Ohio Revised Code that specifies sort of minimum and maximum salaries, and it kind of lays out a salary schedule that Ohio schools have to follow. So, we have one, you can advance one of two ways. You can either advance based on your education, or you can advance based on your experience or both. So, as teachers or staff get more education, they advance to the right, and as they gain experience, they advance downward on the schedule. Every now and then, people are frozen at certain steps, I think like a step 12 and 15, you're frozen until your experience advances to like eight, it's about three years, I think, at different points on the salary schedule. So, if you have further questions, I'm happy to show it to you. If you look on the Human Resources tab of the website, you can actually click on the classified salary schedule for employees in the OPEC bargaining unit, and then you can also click on the tab for certified, which is the salary schedule for all certificated staff. And then we also have salary schedules for almost, for every designation in the district except for treasurer and superintendent.
Now, I brought that up because I think it's important for the community to understand what we do is in line with what is outlined from the state, so we have some outlines there. We also have a credible talent here, which we've saw, our teacher of the year, so it's really important for our students and our community to realize the importance of retaining talent and our teachers and our support staff, and how important that is to the overall health and welfare of a community school and how it benefits our community. I think those are really key pieces that people recognize and understand and appreciate that that's done with integrity and prudence, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, and then from time to time, I have Mr. Seymour and myself, and sometimes Mr. Denny, we consult with surrounding districts and we compare our schedules with other districts so that we remain competitive, because we don't ever want to be at the top or the bottom. We want to try to be somewhere where we're competitive but also sensitive to taxpayers here in the district.
Right, I think that's, those are important, very transparent pieces that we want to, that our community to know about and to know that we appreciate their tax dollars and we want to be very good stewards of them.
Yes.
Thank you for your help.
You're welcome.
Mr. Smith had a question about Schedule D. I sent you some literature on it, I don't know if you got it or you want to...
Yeah, I read it. It's cool. I don't necessarily have a question about it, just in my overall thoughts in, within our district. When I see specific, I guess, jobs like this, I look at that as a potential opportunity that maybe we can engage our young people, because when I read over the responsibilities of it, I just thought to myself, if I was a student at Witten Woods and I saw an opportunity like this and I was maybe into graphics and things of that nature, it may be something that would interest me. And so, I don't know the fine line between employment and student engagement, things of that nature, but I always like to look at opportunities to see where we can show our students different pathways of potential job opportunities, career opportunities, majors and stuff, because I went to this district and I was involved in video club, and literally I was involved with stage crew, and between video club and stage crew, that literally projected me into going into my career. And so, when I look at things like that, and I appreciate you giving me that information because it definitely spelled out exactly what I wanted to see, how that, you know, what that person was gonna do, and so it really sparked my interest to see if there was any way that we can make, not, I don't know how to put it in educational terms, but make an opportunity available to see if this person could allow a student to shadow or something of that nature, I don't know. I just thought of it as a really interesting opportunity, especially because we're a new tech district and we're really, you know, really forward about technology, anything about technology, I always look at that like, how can we take that opportunity and allow a kid to see something that may spark their interest?
You know what, I think that's an excellent point, and between Ms. Hobbs and Ms. Wilson, we've been working on talking about mentorships and something where, you know, for a fact, kids can major in theater and lighting, and that's an incredible career, and you go all over the country actually setting up sound and stage opportunities for young people.
Yep.
The more they see it here, the better it is.
Exactly.
And we have people on hand who have those special talents, and I think it's very important, like you mentioned, to start spreading it out so kids get the opportunity, where you go to major in theater and lighting and you already know some of the basics before you get there, that puts you ahead of the class.
That's it.
So, well taken, good point.
I appreciate that. Like I said...
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I got that information, thank you for that, and like I said, it spelled out everything I needed to know about that position, so it just really sparked my interest in just thinking about our kids and how we can give them different opportunities.
And what you're talking about is something we talk about often in the district, is creating opportunities.
Mm-hmm.
That's what we want to do. So, thank you, sir.
Very good, I love that idea. It's fantastic. So, are there any other questions or discussion around item, agenda item 10.01? Seeing none, thank you, Mrs. Wilson. Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Mrs. Coon?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. And Mr. Smith, do we need to go back to school reports at this time?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, school reports, we are all over the place, just kind of hang there with us here. 9.01, the superintendent's report for school reports, you have the floor.
Yeah, the main thing that's going to happen that we're excited about, unfortunately, we're gonna do, we're gonna make a video, but unfortunately, Mr. Denny, Mr. Martin, Mr. Daye, and myself will be presenting at South by Southwest, and they've asked us to come and present to talk about the incredible buildings and incredible work and also the distributed dining, so we will not be here for the Night of Freedom, but we're going to make a nice video for the young people to letting them know that we know that their projects are gonna be absolutely incredible. So, the two major events would be the Night of Freedom, and they're in two different places this year, but not at the same time. There's one that's going to be at the North Campus and one at the South Campus, and I have to go back and refresh my memory, March 10th, South Campus starts at 7:00 PM. And what people need to understand about the Night of Freedom, I have to tell you, the first year we were shocked when we had over 1,400 people. That was absolutely amazing, because our families don't really like to go into the city, and they were there at the National Underground Railroad Freedom Center, and it was one of the best events that we ever had. The Freedom Center is very sad because we're using our own place now, and so we don't have to travel, but then there's the 7 through 12 on March 17th, and it's 5:30 to 7:30, the other one is 5 to 7. It's a two-hour event, and I'm telling you, when you folks come, you will absolutely enjoy yourself and get a chance to talk to the young people up close and personal because they will share their ideas and thoughts about what it means to be freedom, what freedom means to me, excuse me. So, that's the main one, and of course, we've got our big girls' game tomorrow night, and it's at Lakota West. West, Lakota West, all right? And hopefully the girls will prevail, but you heard them, they are very, very humble young ladies, and they won six games last year, and they didn't complain, and we said we're gonna really retool ourselves. Some of the kids stayed on the team, and now we have some freshmen that are excited about playing basketball all over again. And I will tell you, there was a picture that was taken at the game on Saturday, and the picture really touched my spirit. It was the boys' football team taking a picture with the girls' championship basketball team, and no one asked them to do it, they did it out of the love of that organization. And I think, Brandon, you saw it too, that was a very, very powerful piece. So, very good.
Very good. I can speak for the Night of Freedom, having gone to the first couple that we have, it was, it's just an amazing display of what our kids are doing and what project-based learning can do and how it makes it real. Math becomes real, science becomes real, history becomes real, and then all of it is encompassed in what? English and language arts, because you have to write and read, and so it's just a fantastic display of what our children can do. So, Board, if you can come out to those two events, you won't be disappointed.
Will not be disappointed.
You will not be disappointed.
And it's open to the public, too.
Yes, it is.
So, it's not just reserved for students, it's, we're right here in the heart of Green Hills right now, or in Forest Park, or come to both, but it's a great way for people to see what goes on in your schools. They've paid for them, and they might as well see the value, the tremendous value.
Absolutely.
Good point, Ms. Coon. F-R-E-E, free.
Yes.
Unless you want to donate, you can donate. You can.
So, Dr. Johnson, my team of one, two, three, four, five, and I count Ms. Baker on my team, is six. They're giving me that look, and it says, hey, we went early so we can leave early, but we're still here. So, guys, have a good night, thank you.
We do appreciate all that you do. Just before you leave, we want you to know that we do appreciate you, thank you so much. All right, thank you, Mr. Smith. Now, I gotta figure out where we are, I think we're going back to 7.01, is that right, Board? Are we all in agreement to that?
Yeah, the treasurer's part.
Yes, the treasurer's recommendations, they're, okay. So, I just need to keep myself honest, too, because I'm just all over the place here. So, the next item on the agenda is going back to 7.01, which is our treasurer's report for the financial statements for January 2022. Mr. Seymour, you have the floor.
Ah, yes, for the month ending January 31st, the year-to-date revenues in the general fund were 28.9 million. Our months-to-date were 5.1 million, and most of that was from real estate tax advances. Our year-to-date expenditures are running at 29.2 million, and we are currently running approximately $4.6 million under, 4.6% under budget for the general fund at this time, which equates to about 2.9 million. And I looked back at last year, and we're a little bit running right, close to where we were running at this time last year. But at the next work session, I'm gonna try to bring and let you know how we stand with the forecast. As you know, the forecast is a revolving door on our state funding, and at our last meeting, we learned that they're still working on how to handle open enrollment. So, currently, our open enrollment has not been updated yet. So, we're getting, as time goes on, we're getting a better handle on how much state foundation is going to bring in from the new Patterson Fair Funding Formula. Also, total of all funds, we have 28.9 million, of which 15.8 was the general fund, and we're still, of the major funds, and we're still have approximately 5.7 in our classroom facilities fund. And that's basically the financials for the month of January.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. With no objections being heard, we'll let the financial statements for the month of January 2022 be submitted for audit.
Right, can I say one comment, too?
Yes.
I wanted to say, I appreciate, and I make sure I heard that correctly, even with all the inflation and so forth going on, we're still under budget and we're spending about what we spent last year, so we're pretty good with our money from our expenditure point of view, from a taxpayer point of view?
Yes.
Okay.
However, there's other factors coming into play this year. It's a year of funding and expenditures that I'm experiencing for the first time, where we're only getting funded for kids coming into our buildings, and it's taking time for the state to get their hands around all of that, all across the state of Ohio, there are children going everywhere.
Right.
And step by step, they're getting closer and closer to letting us know where we are with our funding.
I appreciate that, because I know it has to be really, really tricky right now, obviously.
It's very tricky, and it also adds trickiness to a levy that's been proposed.
Right.
And hopefully, people understand that due to the state fair funding is why we decided to go for a five-year temporary, it's called emergency, but it's just a five-year fixed-dollar amount, and at the end of that five years, we'll know what happens with this fair funding formula.
Right.
And then you can decide at that time, you let that fall off the tax duplicate... And then you can decide at that time, you let that fall off the tax duplicate, or did the fair funding formula not come to fruition?
Right. So it's a fixed time period. It's not forever. It's five years, and it's a fixed amount.
And also, the fair funding formula was suggested to be a six-year phase-in. So it kind of goes hand in hand with what we know today.
Right.
We don't know what we might know in January, next January, or...
Right. And especially since we haven't had any new operating funding for...
Right. And we actually received the wording for the ballot today that was approved by our legal, financial legal counsel.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Hopefully, I answered your question.
You did. I just kind of wanted to, it was more of a statement, but I appreciate it.
Oh, okay.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is 8.01, which is the treasurer's recommendation for investments for January 2022. Back to you, Mr. Seymour.
Yes, we had $29 million invested, which yielded approximately $9,993, of which $9,400 was in the general fund and 570 in the building fund. You have to understand that money in the building fund is all cash right now, earning .02% interest. So it has to be back to liquid for meeting obligations. So that's far from where we were two years ago. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Board, a motion would be in order.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the investment report as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Burdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 8.02, which is the fiscal year 2022 appropriations, the revisions. Mr. Seymour, you have the floor.
Yes, we had a need to revise some of our appropriations for some of our funds, not our general fund. But I'm asking for increases in OO7, which is our special trust. O18 is called public school support, but that's also, in layman's terms, that's the principals' fund at the building. O19 is other grants. And then also, from the state of Ohio, 499, we have been awarded a school bus purchase. We have been able to apply for a new purchase of buses in the amount of $208,000. So those funds were not known at the time of your original appropriation. The $208,000 is our state's share of purchasing four buses. The extra cost of the four buses, which will be close to $400,000, is going to be coming from Esser. General fund will be getting, we will be getting a total of four buses here, not paid by general fund. The O19 is up, I should go in order. OO7 is up because of some donations, one in particularly from Mercy. O18 is up because in the last couple of years, we've done little fundraising, and our principals at the South Campus did a major fundraising this year and raised $30,000. And so those funds go directly back to the children to do things that general fund cannot do, if that makes sense. General fund has to stick to certain guidelines. The principals will be able to use these funds to reward children or to buy, you know, hold parties or principals' luncheons or whatever. And O19 is basically due to the Winton Woods Foundation. As you heard, we're going to get a donation close to $20,000 that we did not know about when we set the appropriations. So I'm requesting the board increase those appropriations for those funds, only those funds, to those amounts. And I also attached a certificate of sources available, which will also go down to the county auditor before the auditor would approve those increased appropriations.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Seymour, Board. A motion would be in order.
Madam President, I'll make a motion to amend the fiscal year 2022 fund appropriations as follows. OO7 Special Trust, 122,900. O18 Public School Support, Principals' Fund, $91,300. O19 Other Grants by $128,750. And 499 School Bus Purchase Program by $209,947, as presented.
Thank you. It's been motioned. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion?
Thank you for explaining that, because I was going to ask questions about all of that.
Did I explain it okay?
Yes, you did. Because I wanted to know where the money goes, because that's what everybody asks.
Yeah, so that's what everybody wants to know.
Everybody wants to know.
Basically, all those funds are non-general fund funds that was hard to guesstimate the revenue and expenditures after two years of pandemic.
Well, I think it's key to know, so when people ask, you know, like, where'd he get this money for, a party, and then, you know, you can explain, that's not general. And so then you can get people to lay off some of the hard questions of why we're spending money.
Many, many things that the schools, the buildings do are not paid for tax dollars.
Right. And I don't think people understand that. I really don't think, because I, I'll be honest, I didn't know that. I thought my tax dollars paid for everything.
Right.
Yeah. So I appreciate the in-depth and, once again, saying that so that our public can understand that. And so, you know, that is public record, so people can understand that, you know, you can't complain about everything and call it your tax dollars, because some of those things are not your tax dollars.
Hey, Brandon?
Yes, sir?
Even the simple thing, you know, the artwork that's displayed in our schools, it's actually not, we don't even, we don't even frame that art. It's done by Emeritus.
Wow.
So we don't even do, we are very, very careful about who, how we use tax dollars, and we have a great partnership with Mercy that really helps us with a lot of things that people have no idea.
And now we have another partnership with Emeritus.
Absolutely.
Awesome. Thank you for that. I appreciate that.
That's great.
And I think that's why it's so important that we continue to build those community relationships and those partnerships throughout the community, because they can help us along the way in so many different areas.
Critical, duh. They're critical partners.
It's very critical partnerships, absolutely. And we appreciate all of them, you know, because they really do help our school and help our students to have better access, if you will.
I forgot to mention one thing, too, that would be important. We also got additional funding from Neatest Kids of All.
Oh.
And that's where volunteers go and buy uniforms and clothing for the children that can't. And all of that funds comes from our O19, from Neatest Kids of All. I forgot to mention that one.
Thank you. And that's the O19 account?
Yeah, that's in O19.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, let's go back to that later. All right. If there are no more questions or discussion, Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Burdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. And I believe we're back on course, and the next item on our agenda is 10.02. Am I right?
Yes.
Okay.
I agree.
All right. 10.02 is the next item, which is the resolution authorizing membership in the Ohio High School Athletic Association for the 2022-2023 school year. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President, I'm going to skip some of the language, and unless you guys want me to read it all, I can. But the language really specifies that we agree to be a partnership with the Ohio High School Athletic Association. Some people believe that you can opt out. You can. But remember, the tournament that's run is the Ohio High School Athletic Association's tournament. It is not a Winton Woods tournament. It is not a Forest Park tournament. It is not a Green Hills tournament. So when you, we went to Akron and won the championship game, that game is sponsored by the Ohio High School Athletic Association. If you say, I don't want to be in the association, you are not invited to the tournament. So these parts are part of this whole resolution. And the Board of Education, Governing Board, and the administration desire the schools with one or more grades at the seventh world level under the jurisdiction to be voluntarily members of the OHSAA. However, once you're out, you are probably out. So there would have to be some kind of petition to get back into the Ohio High School Athletic Association. You could still be in the league of the ECC, but if the ECC is smart, they probably would not want you to be in their league because you cannot represent them in the OHSAA. So it is to the Board's advantage for us to be part of this organization. And one of the things that they mentioned, and it's another part of the organization, is about GPA athletes and student athletes. Theirs was a minimum, and they've taken it off since then. Theirs was a minimum of a 1.0. I don't see it anymore, because we raised ours to a 2.5, because some districts, Ms. Bryant and Mr. Smith, have a 1.0. That is the requirement. Ours is a 2.5 to participate at Winton Wood City Schools. One other piece of information that goes along with this, Mr. Martin gave me some incredible information that just, it was just great. We usually have a 10-game season. Our boys played 16 games in order to make it to the state championship. 35 of the boys had 3.0s or higher.
Wow.
So that is an absolute incredible accomplishment based on GPAs. And it's all about expectations. If you expect them to do it, they will do it. Years ago, we had what's called study table. I don't know if there are any ex-athletes in the room, but study tables were usually done by coaches. I know coaches are great people, but they cannot teach calculus. So what we ended up doing is using our own teachers for a study table. That means your teacher is actually your study table person and will help you through those rough spots in class, as long as you show up and do the right thing. So it's all paying off.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Board, a motion would be in order.
I'm motioning to approve the resolution authorizing membership into the Ohio High School Athletic Association for the 2022-2023 school year as presented. I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion?
Just one, just one more comment, and you alluded to it, but being able to participate in those playoff games gives them exposure to colleges.
Absolutely.
Which opens up the opportunity for scholarships that can get them into the places that they want to be. And as you've said, we want to make sure that our children have the opportunity to choose where they go. They don't go someplace because that's the only place that they can go.
Absolutely.
So I just wanted to say that.
And you guys will get a chance to see that in the next opportunity with the superintendent's scholars, where many of them have been accepted to many universities. They're choosing the one they want as opposed to choosing what you want me to do. There are actually 17 young men and nine young women that are on full scholarship without any pocket expense from their parents across the region, Division I athletics.
That's huge.
That is very huge. That is fantastic news. D1 schools. Great. All right. If there's no other questions or discussion, Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Burdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. And that vote passes unanimously as well.
Dr. Johnson, can I stop for a minute? There was a comment, and I don't know if you guys heard it several months ago, that we should treat academics as well as we treat athletics. And the, if you look at the comparison of the two, we do. That's why the kids are in college and universities, because we recognize it and treat it that way. So I just want people to understand that even though we recognize the young ladies tonight, we do recognize all of our kids for their accomplishments. And when people come to the Night of Freedom, they'll see another resource of young people doing that, doing what's good. Okay?
Yes, and just to piggyback a little bit on that, the room was full of students who were achievers in one way or the other, and they weren't all athletes.
That's exactly right.
So it's just worth making a note of, so thank you for that. The next item on the agenda is 10.03, which is the resolution for participation in the EPC School Bus Purchasing Program. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Mr. Seymour?
Oh, Mr. Seymour, you have the floor.
Basically, we need to do bidding process in order to purchase the buses with federal funds, plus it's over our threshold for, what, of $250,000. And EPC does what's called a state-term bus bid for all school districts in the region. And they asked us to get board permission to use their bid. So we're just basically getting a board resolution, giving Mr. Denny permission to use their quotes in order to secure our buses.
Okay. All right. Let's go ahead and get a motion on the floor, and if we have any questions, then we can ask at that time.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution, participation in Southwest Ohio Educational Purchasing Council for the purchase of buses as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. And are there any questions or discussion around the purchasing of the buses using the council, EPC?
What is that, what is that timeline looking like?
It takes almost two years to get a bus, from the date of releasing the purchase order to payment. It's not two whole years, two fiscal years, I should say. We won't have them by the close of this school year.
But your estimation is pre-COVID?
Yeah, that was pre-COVID.
Okay. All right. Just checking.
This is very true.
Yes.
Everything's a little slower.
How long did it take to get the vans, a year?
It took nine months.
Nine months.
Yes.
Whole school year.
Yes.
So I guess, I'm basing that on historical.
Yeah.
Basically, historically, it took around 12 months. I do not know now, I guess I should say.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hopefully, we get them before they close the grant out on us.
Yes.
That'd be nice.
That'd be wonderful.
Okay. If there are no other questions or discussion, Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Sure. Was that Mrs. Kuhn seconding?
Yes, Mrs. Kuhn.
Thank you. Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Burdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda is 11.01 for the Board of Education reports and the legislative report. Mrs. Kuhn, you have information you would like to share?
Yeah, I have presented to the board just some pieces from the OSBA's Facts in a Flash. Gives us a synopsis of some of the work that goes on in our legislature in Ohio. I did want to point out a couple of things and then kind of go off the subject, well, without here, but there was another information about public school transportation. But I did want to point out to the board, the House bill that talks about a Board of Education, it's continuing the option, should we ever need to use it, to remotely, to meet remotely until June 30th of this year, just so that we're all aware that that was on there. That was a, a rule that was allowed during COVID itself, and they extended it a little bit, but it's important we know that. Apparently, they did finalize their redistricting of state legislative maps. Still not all happily done, but they have done that, the state of Ohio. And then there was one other piece, and again, you can look through here and see the different ones, but there will be, there's one other one. Well, those were the main two pieces, and, oh, there was one other. The committee held a sponsored testimony. It's House Bill 459 that prohibits an individual restricted offender category from being in a position as employee, employer, employee, independent contractor, or volunteer. They just look out for some protection for students. And then one other piece that Mr. Smith saw was very, very important that we review is regards to House Bill 110 and the ODE's implementation of this, and it deals with public transportation challenges for public school districts. There's some code, Ohio's code, that we have to follow as well. And I'll defer to Mr. Smith to elaborate a little bit more for our benefit.
Yes, Madam President and Board. I've been asked to serve on this committee in a challenge with the Ohio Department of Education for other superintendents that believe that this is absolutely unconstitutional to do it the way that they're doing it. And the reason I, I, when I was doing my research, what I noticed is there's not an appeal process. You can't have a constitutional amendment or a constitutional statement without having a way to appeal. The appeal process is not even done. So for them to regulate this, starting October 1st, our, one of our colleagues south of us was already hit with a $2.64 million reduction, and they're more on their way. So these are all based on people not transporting kids, but one of the things that we did understand is there's a topic called same basis, and it's been the standard which public schools have been held for many decades, that's presented repeatedly to school district staff and transportation seminars and other things. So we're following those pieces, but then, at the end of the day, they're saying there's a violation. And you don't get any warning that they're going to take the money, they just take the money. And there is no way to get the money back, there's no appeal process. And my concern was, how do you put something implemented without having a way to appeal it? Okay? And then the other piece is, we have to have a very, very definitive definition. What do we call a qualifying rider? Because what our neighboring district did is their kids have bus cards. And what they do, those bus cards are paid for. They are not for free. And when they say that the young people are not using the bus card to the board, they will actually revoke the bus card after 45 days. And they feel like if you've not riding the bus in 45 days, you have no intention of riding the bus. So they revoke the bus card, but they also revoked ridership to public and private students as well, and it just kind of blew a circuit. Because parents are saying, I don't have to ride the bus every day to know that my kid is going to be a bus rider. You don't, but you have to give us a window of at least a reasonable amount of time, because what we're going to do is automatically reroute that bus so it's going to be more efficient. And it can't be, I don't ride it for 10 days, and then I come back for 10 days. You know, whenever it's, it's to my pleasure. And then the other thing is, there's, I'm going to send you guys some information. Route, revised code 3314.09, you don't have to write it down, I will send it to you. And it will also be 3327.01, which is these codes that really talk about how you qualify a rider and how this is really supposed to be used the right way at the right time. And there's also the T1 report that Mr. Seymour is very familiar with, that really talks about how this ridership is really supposed to be calculated. And they're just kind of doing it their own way. And a lot of districts are really getting hit with huge, huge, huge reductions in their budget. And I don't know where they would ever find the money to restore it, but we are in good shape. Even when we had the championship game where we had to, we made a decision to have school closed, we still provided ridership for the public and private. We are smart enough to know that we have to do it no matter what. In the, if there, in the event that there's inclement weather, of course, we would let those schools know that we're not going to provide buses because of the safety of our operators and the children. So that's just a little bit about it. And the last piece that I mentioned to the state was, we'd like to partner with the department and the legislature to address the school bus driver shortage. There are some districts that have said that we have really reduced the amount of time that you have to be on the road to get a driver's permit or CDL. And the state of Ohio has the most stringent one of all. However, our reduction in accidents is not the hot, not the lowest. So they're saying, okay, if we're in the same thing like with Missouri and Texas and Alabama, and we have the same amount of accidents, the same amount of issues, why can't we reduce that opportunity so that we can have more people get their CDLs in the state of Ohio and make it a very, very efficient manner? We're talking about buying new buses. The other part of the formula is to find the people to drive those buses.
Right, that's the problem.
Yeah. What we've done now is, Mr. Seymour mentioned the vans, we've done something very creative where we took our vans, and I was mentioning this to Mrs. Kuhn earlier, instead of having a bowling team that has five people on the bowling team take a yellow bus, we actually have a van and a coach, and the van, the van is just a more accessible transportation opportunity, least restrictive, very, very cost-efficient, where at the end of their game, everybody at this table, you would prefer a van bringing your kid to your door than a private car. Okay? And so we've done that and put those things into place, and it's actually made us better because the ECC, before they accepted us into the league, one of the issues they had about the other school was they were never making the games on time. But remember, if you double route these buses, and you have the bus that's supposed to pick the kids up after school, and now you have the same bus that has to take the kid to the game out at West Claremont, you have a miss. And so we've been able to work through it and use the vans to our advantage, and it was a great, great move on our part.
Good.
So I want to bring you guys up to speed. And thank you, Ms. Kuhn, for our conversation earlier. Okay?
Very good. Thank you very much, Mr. Smith and Mrs. Kuhn. The next item on the agenda is 11.01, the Great Old Career Technical Center Report. And I know Mr. Birdy did send us some things, but you can also go ahead and share what you can.
Yeah, just real quickly, I gave everybody a copy of the board highlights that they published from the, the meeting that we had on February 9th. And then Mr. Snyder will send out updates as to what he's involved in on a, on a regular basis. So I included that, that email message that he sent to our board. And then there's some ACTE reports and legislative reports included in there, and then a diversity and unity, unity committee report. And then one of the things I always like to highlight is the students, the Wittenwood students that are recognized at, in this case, Scarlet Oaks. They all three received January Scarlet Citizenship Awards, and one of them was Arath Hernandez in the culinary program, Jarrah Longmire in the culinary program, and Gary Dorsey in the dental program. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Birdy. The next item on the agenda is 12.01, which is Board Motions and Recommendations. Board, I'm not aware of any. Mr. Seymour, Mr. Smith, anybody, you all have anything?
No.
Okay, we're going to move right on past 12.01 then, and it takes us to 13.01, which is comments from the Board of Education Superintendent and Treasurer. We'll start with you, Mr. Seymour.
I have nothing, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Superintendent Smith?
Yes, Madam President and Board. We are, I sent some correspondence to you regarding the masking mandates or recommendations from the CDC. And I since wrote a letter to the Health Commissioner and also the Epidemiologist, Dr. Fagans and Mr. Kesterman, about the possibility of when we should think about transitioning the mask. And what I wanted to do is give you some numbers that would really kind of help you understand which direction we're going in. January 28th, there were 32,000 active cases in Hamilton County. February 4th, there were 21,000 active cases. February 11th, there were 17 active cases. In my last report of February 25th, there are 5,500 active cases. So it's been reduced significantly. And one of the things that we'd like to consider is having a conversation with the community by survey and a conversation with the board to make masking optional after, two weeks after spring break, if the numbers keep diminishing. And there are parents that are starting to ask questions about the mask and about the vaccine. I'm not really interested in rushing this, but I know we are in quadrant six, and quadrant six usually has a spike after an event. And so I would like to petition to the board that we consider that as an option two weeks after spring break, but not before.
I would agree that that would be a good, good course to follow. I'm excited for kids to be able to get back in school and not have masks all the time, to see their friends' faces, to be able to see their teachers' facial expressions, especially our young ones.
Totally agree.
That I think it's really important for their emotional development. So if we find the timing to be very appropriate, and if our community agrees, I would be on board with that.
We're just hoping that it keeps reducing.
I agree.
Is there any data out there from our district, specifically the number of students or staff that have been vaccinated? You have that data? So that, that would be good to share as well.
The good thing for us, Doc, is we actually have 92% of our staff that's received the vaccine.
92%.
And we were higher than most because Mercy gave us the opportunity to run clinics right here on our campus. So we didn't have any excuses about anything.
What about our student population? Do we have a rough estimate?
About the rest of who?
Of the students?
Oh, the student population is very tricky because of age appropriate and all these other things that go along with it. Parents kind of have to give you that information. And usually, they give you the information when you're talking about a quarantine opportunity. They're like, hold up, my kid's been, been vaccinated. Like, okay, you could have told us before, that, that would help me.
Right, right.
Or if you talk about, yeah, we might, we might not be able to have a kid participate. So there have been so many opportunities where young people have had to be eliminated from swimming meets, soccer meets. If you notice, if you hear very, very carefully, those things are not happening right now.
Yeah, that's very good.
So it's actually moving in the right direction, but, I mean, we have an expert of a nurse in our, on our, on our team, and I can tell you, if people are waiting for the number to be zero, I, I don't think that that's going to happen. Because in order for it to be zero, you would have to have 100% of people being, receive the vaccine.
And even then, you still can catch it. So that doesn't warrant off.
Absolutely.
But, but I do think we have to find a middle ground to be able to live with it in an effective way and be safe.
Totally agree. And that's where, Ms. Kuhn, the, it wouldn't say that we're not following the guidelines of the CDC. We would say that the masks are optional.
Right.
However, there will be one place that the mask will not be optional on the school bus.
That's, that's based on Ohio law, right?
Yes.
So that's not our call.
Yeah, but there are some districts who said, no mask anywhere. And I, I'm not really interested in going that far out into it. So the close proximity of the bus is always still an indicator for me.
Will the state look at the busing requirement, and, or do you know anything about that?
They're going to keep pushing the envelope, but for the state to jump in on a legislative model right now, when we are in March and school gets out in May?
They're not going to.
They, they may not have any interest for that.
But for next year, I guess?
Yes, ma'am.
You might see something next year.
See, people don't wear, mind wearing a mask when it's cold weather.
Oh, no.
They just don't.
It's still warm.
But when it starts getting warm, they're starting to challenge it, like, wait a minute, okay? And believe it or not, this is not a, this is not my perspective, this is just a perspective of people that you talk to from other school districts. The young ladies are complaining about what it does with the makeup. And so they're saying, this is not working for me. I know. I know, okay.
It ruins your lipstick, I'm going to tell you. It's not good for your lips.
I think that's a really good plan, Superintendent Smith, that we're looking at the numbers and letting the data drive the response and not the emotion behind, you know, masks, because they do protect.
Yes.
They do decrease the, the transmission of COVID-19. So thank you for that discussion and that suggestion.
Yeah, one last part. There were some school districts that revealed information, and I'm telling you guys, we have no interest in this. When young people were exposed to COVID and they had to quarantine, well, the kid would be able to come back in five days with a mask. But this is a school district that masks are not required. It just ostracizes the kid. It just puts him in a very compromising situation. The only kid sitting in the room with the mask, that tells people that you've been exposed. And we really don't want that to happen. So when a young person is exposed, once the mask situation just dissipates, they would probably have to be remote for the 10 days so that we don't put them in a compromising situation. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Birdy?
Just congratulations to Mr. Amstead for what he's done as far as the AFS USA Global Educator of the Year Award. That's fantastic for one of our educators to receive, to receive that award. Thank you to our community partners, be it Mercy, Emeritus, Kuanis Club, Nevious Kids of All, everybody who's contributing to what's going on here. We appreciate all that. Night of Freedom is a phenomenal night, so those of you in the community, if you get a chance to attend both of these, you, you won't regret it, you will thoroughly enjoy it. And then with that, I will end my comments.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Birdy. Mr. Brandon Smith?
Super excited about Night of Freedom.
Yes.
I've enjoyed it every year, and so I definitely look forward to it. And bringing it back home, that's going to be exciting.
Absolutely.
Excited about the Lady Warriors. I was at the game with superintendent on Saturday. It was very exhilarating to watch them pull off that win. So looking forward to tomorrow, going to see our Lady Warriors. And just appreciate all the work of, of the district and our, our employees and all of our teachers, and just excited about Warrior Nation. Excited about Warrior Nation. And that concludes my comments.
All right, thank you, Mr. Smith. Mrs. Kuhn?
Again, I'll jump on the bandwagon and echo all the accolades our community is, should be proud of, all the accomplishments of our students, the diversity that each story comes. I thought it was especially noted, Mr. Amstead's talking about the stories each child brings. That's, I think, really important, that arts, academics, athletics, all of these pieces are opportunities for students to excel and move on. And our community should be very proud of these accomplishments. So that's all I have to say.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Kuhn. Mrs. Bryant?
I'm not sure how I can follow my eloquent board members, but I did owe their responses. Congratulations to those who have won honors and recognized for their great accomplishments, and thank you for that all that you all do to make this a great community. And go Warriors! And good luck tomorrow, Lady Warriors, I'll be cheering you on.
Thank you, Mrs. Bryant. And then my comments. I'll try to keep them brief. And many of you have already echoed some of the things that I have had written down here, but again, thank you to the fire department, to our newest board member, Mrs. Bryant, and the establishment of the blessing box, and knowing that there's another one on the way. And if you want to contribute, you can get in contact with us here at the board, Mrs. Bryant, or the fire department, and they'll tell you what you need to do. But it's just sitting there for you to take or to, to give to the blessing box and to Mrs., Mr. Amstead and Mr. Gray, Coach Gray for the Lady Warriors. 25 and 1 season, that's phenomenal. That's phenomenal. I don't care how you slice it up, dice it up, it's, that's phenomenal. And while Mr. Hable was not here, we still want to recognize the Wittenwoods High School Jazz Band for their opportunity to perform with the Contemporary Jazz Orchestra. And I always, about this time of year, start thinking, because I'm on a scholarship committee at, at the place where I work, and just to start thinking about, if you are thinking about having your child go to college, have them fill out the FAFSA, F-A-F-S-A, the Free Application for Federal Student Aid. And this application is needed to be completed if you want to get any money. It's, it's, it's not for just people who are needy, it's, if you want to apply for even loans, you have to fill, fill out that document and for scholarships and, and everything. So if you're thinking about your child going to college, you need to start thinking about getting your documents together while you're doing your taxes and fill that out at the same time. A few other noteworthy events is on Tuesday, March the 1st, early kindergarten registration begins on Wednesday, the 2nd. The 11th grade is supposed to start, they're going to have an all-day ACT testing with virtual learning for the 9th, 10th, and 12th grade students. And it's on our calendar, I couldn't really find a lot of information about it. The Ohio Music Education Association is going to be in our building on, is it, following or?
I think they're gonna, and Brandon can correct me, but I think it's here?
Yeah, it's, it's.
This location, and it's next weekend?
It's at the.
Yeah, March, it's at the high school.
It's at the high school, at the high school.
And it's March the 4th and the 5th?
Yes.
Yes. I mean, and that's big, because I don't remember us hosting it in that way before.
We've never.
So we've never hosted it. And I mean, I've been in the district for a long time, so that's really big. And I, it's just, it's, you know, it's just a great opportunity. And to piggyback on that, the following week, on Tuesday, March the 8th, the Wittenwoods Middle School is going to have a post-OMEA concert, you know, choir concert. So that's going to be exciting as well. And Thursday, the 10th, March the 10th, fourth quarter begins, and that's when the Night of Freedom for our, our baby warriors, our little wee warriors here. And then also, there's a credit check that'll happen on that day for our Project Success students. So it's important so that they know, leading up, how close am I, am I on target, not whatever? So, and we've already been appraised to the Night of Freedom for the March 17th, for the 7th through 12th grade. And as it's already been mentioned, it's, it's, it's coming home, it's in our buildings. And maybe the Freedom Center is not as excited about that as we are, but we also get to showcase our beautiful buildings for people who didn't get to come and do a tour. So this is another opportunity for you to see our beautiful buildings. Just a few more observations here. Friday, March the 18th, will be district report card distribution. And it seems like it's so far away, but parents, it gives you an opportunity right now to check your students, if they have missing assignments, if there's something that they need to do. As a teacher and educator myself, I know that those few weeks just before, you know, it's time to give that grade can be very critical to, you know, the difference between a B and a C, a C and a D, and on an A and a B, you know. So pay attention to those things. And we all look forward to spring break. As educators, we need that week off to decompress. So that's coming up, March 21st through Friday, the 25th, that's the Monday through Friday. And again, I just always, we can't say it enough, and while thank you doesn't seem to be enough, please know that we do appreciate each and every person that pours into our children in the district. As Mr. Bertie had said, whether you're a community partner, and I don't want to begin to start naming them, because I'll leave something out, but certainly to our district leadership team, Superintendent Smith, the executive team, and to Mr. Seymour, and the assistance to the treasurer's office, the teachers, the paraprofessionals, the cafeteria workers, the custodians, and let's, this goes on and on and on. But to everyone that has an impact on our students, we want you to know that we really do appreciate the time and the effort that you put in and that you invest into our, into our children. So the transitions that we've had to go through with the pandemic, with the rise in COVID and the fall, this district has shown themselves mighty, in my opinion. We didn't have any missteps. If they did, I didn't see them. We had the technology to the students, the teachers were, you know, ready, and were given the tools that they needed. And it just doesn't go unnoticed, and sometimes they don't think that they are appreciated, but I do want to say that. Mr. Smith, yes?
Dr. Johnson, I know it's in Ms. Kuhn's legislative report, there is a concern about the state of Ohio, because district enrollments are dropping all over the state, and I would, I am very proud to say we are not in that situation.
Thank you, that's good to know. My last point is just to say thank you to the Warrior Community Pantry Team, because biweekly, they're out there faithfully and consistently.
Faithfully.
And it just, you know, you.
Rain, sun, shine, snow, whatever.
Exactly, and I work as a volunteer, and sometimes it's so hard to get people to volunteer for various things. And when I see that they, and I've stopped by there before, and they're very nice, and they're very kind, and it just makes a difference that when you're going to get some help, that people treat you like you're human.
Very good.
And they do, so I just don't want to forget to mention them. And that's all I have for my, for my comments. Board, I do believe that we do need to go into executive session for just a short period of time, so I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Yes, Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to go to executive session for matters required to be kept confidential by federal law or regulations or state statutes under the revised Ohio Code 121.22, just for reference.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded. Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Bertie?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye, and that vote passes unanimously. We will go into a closed session, and we want to thank you, White Cross, for your service in videotaping tonight's meeting. We will not take any further action when we come out of executive session. So with that said, I'd like to call the meeting of the Wintonwoods City School Board of Education Regular Meeting for Monday, February 28th, 2022, adjourned. Thank you, stay safe, healthy, and well, and have a good evening.